La tendre wainy les voix hoping that one day we'll be there in Paris sous mon juste nudeur that one day we'll be somehow clear free les rangs autour d'un et il sait so wishing my love that one day we'll be there in Paris sous mon juste nudeur that one day we'll be somehow clear free les rangs autour d'un et il sait
Welcome in everyone. My name is Danielle Allard. I teach in the School of Media and Design. And I've been working on a lot of original compositions recently. And this one is my first bilingual song called "Paris." And this next one is called "All the Things." Look outside of your window. Tell me all the things, all the things that you see. Tell me what is it like in older places? All the places I can't be? Tell me that you are happy, that you have all the things, all the things that you need. Look out into the city, to all your memories in the buildings and the trees. Close your lovely eyes, smile at the sky, think of nothing but the sun on your skin. Oh, close your weary eyes, dream that we can fly, stand in wonder and all the worlds within just be who you are, who you were meant to be. who you are, who you were meant to be. who you are, who you were meant to be. Just be who you are, who you were meant to be. Thanks so much to the events team for having me. So nice to see some wonderful familiar names in the chat. And it's always a pleasure to be able to play music for my community. If you're just joining, my name is Danielle. I'm a teacher in the School of Media and Design. It's really a pleasure to meet you like this.
Wow, that's all I can say. Thank you very much to our very talented and amazing Danielle Allard, faculty member in the School of Media and Design, for starting us off with wonderful musical introduction. See the comments in the chat there. Gives everyone goosebumps. So beautiful. Thank you very much, Danielle. And welcome everyone to our Algonquin College Town Hall. As guests, Algonquin College is proud to acknowledge that today's event is taking place on the traditional, unseated, unsurrendered territory of the Anishnabe-Algonquin people. Given recent events that are taking place around the world, you know, it's easy to really feel uneasy and challenged. And in the spirit of reconciliation, I offer and I encourage all of us to continue finding common ground that unites us for that is the way that we are stronger together. Thank you. Now, let me introduce the panel members for today. We have Mark Stavinkoff, Vice President, Advancement; Chris Jensen, Senior Vice President, Academic; Diane McCutcheon, Vice President, Human Resources; Dwayne McNair, Vice President, Finance and Administration; Ron Tiganuson-McLester, Vice President, Truth Reconciliation and Indigenousization; Tracy McGoogall, Director, President's Office and Communications; Laura Stanbra, Vice President, Student Services. Now, she might still be off a little bit. There was a fire alarm and seatbelt thing earlier, and she had to move outside, but she will join us as soon as...
I'm here.
Oh, you are here.
Yeah, all good. I'll escape on campus. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Laura. In addition to our panel today, we have Krista Pearson, Register; Michael Laviolette, Director of Risk Management; David Soltes, Director of People and Culture; and Christine Dawson, Associate Vice President, Experiential Learning and Innovation, who will be monitoring our Q and A today. As always, I go through some Zoom housekeeping to start our meeting. If you're having any technical concerns, questions, please reach out through the chat box, and our event team will assist you. Closed caption is available by clicking the closed caption button on the main bar at the bottom of your screen. Now, for our question period, we encourage participants to ask their question live by raising their virtual hand in the toolbar at the bottom. And the reason is that as we begin to transition from a pandemic to a more on-campus activity coming soon, it's a good opportunity for us to practice asking questions live to help us ease back when we're in person again. And when you're selected by our Q and A moderator, you'll be able to unmute yourself and ask your question live. Keep our conversation going by ensuring that our college values are present at all times, our values of caring, learning, integrity, and respect. Now, the Q and A is still there available for you if you're more comfortable with that. Still an option. However, note that your name will be attached to your question. And we do have a short presentation on enrollment, so please hold off your questions until you've seen the presentation. And you know, if time is limited and we can't get through all the questions, as always, you know, we're going to be trying to figure out how to get those answered and get back to you with an answer. All right, some highlights. I always like to start off with some good highlights to start with. Apparently, today is called a palindrome. I hope I'm spelling this, spelling this right here, palindrome. It means that the date is made up of all the same numbers. In this case, the second day of the second month, 22 is the day, and 22 is the year. So it's a bunch of twos. But there you go, palindrome. I learned something today. Some other highlights. Our campus in Perth is kicking off their mural project. So you may have heard through my AC that we have started through the AC Inclusion and Diversity, a mural project at each of our campuses. And today is the kickoff in Perth. The mural project was created in an effort to tackle representation as a barrier for belonging for a college, Black, Indigenous, or people of color in our community. The project will see the installation of one mural on each campus that are conceptually connecting, creating a compelling visual representation of the college. So I think in the chat there, you have a link that you can go to to take a look at it. And these will be installed over a period of time, and you'll be able to see them build up over time. The next story that I want to share with you is entitled "Winter Clothing Drive at Pembroke Campus Helping Our International Students." So in January, one of our campus nurses noticed a student walking across the campus in Pembroke with very red ears, an early sign of that something is about to be frostbitten here. And so she reached out to Ellen Gilat, a recruitment and financial aid officer in the community at Student Affairs Department at Pembroke. Well, she quickly jumped into action, and she set up a rack in the students' common. And to date, she estimates that at least 30 students from China and India have been outfitted with proper cold-weather gear. It's not unbelievable. And she also believes that the college has received over $3,000 in donation towards this great cause. So well done to Ellen Gilat in Pembroke and well done to our Pembroke community for assisting our international students stay warm because the winter is not over just yet. All right, so we now have a presentation, and I will call upon Chris Jensen to give his enrollment presentation. Chris, over to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Claude. And to follow up on your earlier comments, it may still be winter, but spring is coming. It is coming. I have a bunch of crazy goldfinch that apparently never went south for the winter that I've been feeding voraciously all winter, trying to keep alive. And they're really, they're really hoping spring is just around the corner. But at any rate, I digress. A very short enrollment update. I know these were sent around beforehand, so I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. Next slide, please. Just wanted to give folks a bit of an update. This is fiscal 2122. So this is the fiscal year ending in, ending at the end of March here. And you'll note that it was not a particularly good enrollment year. Overall, there was a shortfall of nearly 1,900 students based on what we had budgeted for. And that, that, that's quite a challenge. And if I had to sum it up in one word, I'd use the word COVID to describe what happened here for a variety of reasons. I did promise I'd be brief, so if we could go to the next slide. But looking forward a little bit. Next slide, please. Looking forward to spring, splitting out domestic from enrollment. So far, things are looking pretty good. If you compared progress toward target with where we're on par with where we were last spring, and it turned out to be a good spring last year. So we're 50%, 56% of our way toward the target. Even though the target's a bit bigger this year, we're, we're very hopeful that we're, we're on good track to meet that. So the green dot. Next slide, please. Many of you may know that we have, we have dramatically increased our, our enrollment target for international students, new international students for the spring as well. And I'm very pleased to report that we are also in keeping with previous years with progress toward target of, of meeting that overall target. You see 129% of the way toward the target. Don't get too overly excited about that. That number does tend to drop as students are... These students are not yet all the way through the study permit process. So many of these won't, won't actually be able to join us. But we are again on, on a good track toward the international, the new international enrollment target for the spring. And then, next slide, please. Also, it's a bit early to be, to be putting too much stock in the fall numbers. We are past the, the Feb. 1 date. So we're, we're hopefully going to see that, that blue bar getting longer and longer over the, over the coming weeks and months. But as it stands right now, we are, we are on track toward the fall domestic target. And the next slide, please. We had also increased the international target for the fall. It wasn't just the winter, but also significantly for the fall. And I'm very pleased to report that we're, we're on par with where we've been in previous years on progress toward target. And so we have a green dot for the fall international enrollments as well. So, so far, spring and fall look to be good news stories, although there's still a lot of work left to be done. I'm, I'm pleased with the progress to date so far, and many of you have put a lot of effort, particularly with the new international enrollments, but also the domestic enrollments. And I thank you all for those, those efforts. It, it, it takes community to get here, and we're making excellent progress due to your hard work. So thank you very much. And that concludes the brief enrollment update.
I think that might mean it's my turn. Hello, Algonquin College community. I'm Christine Dawson. I am the Associate Vice President of Experiential, Experiential Learning and Innovation, and I'm pleased to be here today to moderate the question and answer period. So we've reached that point in the agenda. So I'm going to review best practices very briefly because President Brulee just really did so. But we're really encouraging you to ask your questions live. Let's get back into the habit of interacting with each other in, as we move towards a more normal way. So if you're able to, unmute yourself, put the camera on, and ask your question. If you're more comfortable just maybe unmuting, but leaving your camera off, feel free to do that as well. And if you're, you're more comfortable in, in asking a question through the, the Q and A chat, please do, do that as well. We want to, we want to hear your questions. And just reminding everyone to maintain those college values. We want this to be a safe space for everybody. And we're going to also try to make this an efficient time so that the most popular questions get asked first. So don't forget that you can upvote a question. If you see it, a question, you think that's really what you, what you're interested in having an answer for, to upvote it, and it will move its way up the list of, up the list of questions we'll ask at first. But before we get, we begin, we're going to start off with a poll. We're going to do a couple of polls here today. So this one, you know, we know you've joined the town hall because you, you're an engaged employee, and we want your insight. So the first one is, is a pretty easy question, I think. So let's launch this one. So from the following options, what employee group do you belong? Faculty, support staff, or administrative? We'll give everyone a few seconds to, to answer. And hopefully, this is, this is an easy, an easy start, an easy way to get us going. And once we have enough answers in, we'll close the pool. And we'll see who's here joining us today. I think there are about maybe 500 people who'd registered. So hopefully, there's a... I don't think there's a prize, Sarah. No, no. But if you can't get this one right, I think we've got a problem. Okay, so we've got about 9% faculty attending, about 54% support staff, and 37% administrators. And it looks like almost 400 people attending today. So that's great. Thank you, everyone, for taking time out of your day to, to join us. So, you know, let's get started with a first question. And I'm just going to see, I don't see anything in the Q and A just now. And I don't see an, oh, maybe I have, I do have one hand up. Okay, can we open up the attard? For unmute her and allow her to answer her question, ask her question. Valerie, I think it is. You there, Valerie?
It's actually Veronica.
Veronica, sorry.
That's all good. I actually have three questions. I'm going to keep them as concise as possible. Is it okay if I ask a question, get the response, and follow up? To just make it easier and more concise for everybody?
Sure, let's go with one at a time, and we'll just make sure that we don't get a buildup of lots of people asking questions, and I might ask you to jump back in order later.
No worries. So the first question actually was for Claude. There was a message that went out regarding the people who have been affected with the... I can't call it a protest, it's a siege that happened downtown. The message was geared towards co-op for students. There's actually students and staff who live downtown. So I was wondering what was the purpose behind the question? Because it was very confusing. It said you didn't need to make up for co-op, but it said nothing about employees or students facing challenges to get to campus, if they were supposed to get to campus because of what was happening. So if I could get some insight, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely, Veronica. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Oh, my camera's on. Okay. Yeah, we did message earlier, the previous week, on social media. However, not everybody saw that message. It was, it had covered people who live downtown as well and were affected either because they, they had difficulty getting to and from work as well as being affected by their studies. But we had left out the piece around placement. We wanted to make sure that students in particular did not feel obliged to attend their placement, especially if their placements were at an employer that was in the affected zone. So we sent out that reminder as well to let them know that those would not be required, and they would not be required to make up that time at a later date. I hope that addresses your, your question, Veronica.
It does part of it. But as I said, as somebody who lives downtown and I don't have social media, it felt really disheartening. I'm lucky with the managers I have. They made accommodations for me, but not everybody's in that same boat. So if they didn't see the social media message, maybe it should have shared by email as well, just to comment for future.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second question is actually for Claude and Diane, and it's about the messaging about, that we're getting from College Employer Council about bargaining. The motto of the college is caring, learning, integrity, and respect. And I'm not seeing a lot of that in that messaging. And we just got another one. I, it doesn't make me feel good as an employee, and I'm sure that other employees, be it management or faculty, care about each other. And I don't know why we're seeing this messaging. So if you could address that, it'd be great.
Sorry, specifically, you said you received a message. Trying to understand message today.
It's about, it was sent out recently. It was about the vote that happened for faculty and some of the wording about it. As I said, it's not, it's not very respectful to our colleagues, to our faculty. And I'm worried about the tone of the messaging and how it's making us all feel about our coworkers.
We're, yeah, we're trying to be factual in what's being said, Veronica, just to ensure people and everyone has the same information irrespective of employee group, where they can go to the website and, and get the information from, from both management and, and the CATA bargaining group. So that's, that's really just trying to ensure that information gets across so that people could make an informed decision for themselves.
If I can just add to that, Claude, as Veronica wanted to address it to both of us, we've also placed in the chat, thanks to the events team, a website. If you have any further questions, you could go on to the, the chat and link into the most recent communique. I believe that's the one that you were referring to, Veronica, that came out on Friday with the results of the management vote offer. And so that, as far as I am aware, is the last communique that has come out.
Okay, Veronica, so I think you have one last question, and then we're going to move over to the Q and A box.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. The last question again is for Diane and Claude. And it's, I feel like I'm repeating the same thing over. It's about workload. The last town hall, there was quite a number of questions about workload. And there was a presentation made to a set of, from a budget officer group. There were some changes or some implementations that were supposed to come down. We've heard nothing. So if we can get an update and see what measures are being put forward to address workloads, we're seeing staff getting sick. And basically, it's not healthy for the college as a whole. Would like to resolve this problem. We've been dealing with it for the past two years. So I'm eager to hear if there's any improvements or any actions that we'll be taking shortly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll start it off. Maybe I can hand it over to Diane. So thank you for that question. And yes, we did receive an impassioned presentation from Christine Kelsey and then some of the budget officers. I would say primarily, I believe they were from the academic area about capacity and workload issues. I made them a commitment to, to get back to them as with specifics around what they presented, both in the short term and in the long term. And our teams have been working on solutions with them. I might add, so that we could see relief on the number of points that they were raised. Obviously, some aspects of, of the concern raised have systems implications which take time to put into place. And those are being addressed with a timeline. I'm pleased to see that we were able to find resolution for some of the items that were raised. And I would like to leave it to Diane to offer some of those perspective.
Thanks, Claude. And I will probably also turn it over to Dwayne and to Chris to add to this. But thanks for that question, Veronica. And I'm just, I'm really pleased with the outreach that we have had with both President of Local 416, Christine, and the working group, workload group members that we have been in contact with. They have been meeting with representatives from finance. They've been meeting with representatives from Human Resources and with the SBPA as we work through the, the academic area, budget officer workload concerns, which some of the resolutions will also help with other budget officers outside of the academic area. However, that is the group that came to us immediately. So some of the short term... initial issues, we received all of the recommendations from this group and they were divided into short term, medium term, and long term, and we started working with them. And we immediately were able to put in place two short term resolutions right away, the salary calculation database. We also took off and absorbed within human resources, the progression through the scales. So immediate, short term actions that we were able to absorb as of January of twenty twenty-two, January third, twenty twenty-two. Those were two of the immediate, short term ones. We've also started working with the working group on just kind of starting to scope out what some of their long term goals are specifically related to structure. And David Soltes, the Director of People and Culture, who is a panelist today and myself met with the group and, and just started having those conversations about what would this look like and how could we support the academic area leadership in, in crafting that. So I don't want to take up too much time, but I just wanted to let you know that we're on it. And, you know, I will turn it over to Dwayne and to Chris if they wanted to add some of the other little aspects that we're also doing from the different areas, as it is certainly a collaborative effort.
Sure, thanks Diane. I'll, I'll just speak to a few things that are being led by the finance group. So one thing we're working on in the short term is developing a contract signing authority policy that will in effect allow us to delegate signing authority on a risk-based approach to other administrators in the college. So there's not so many contracts and agreements crossing my desk and Claude's desk. So that's on track. We're also, our finance team is engaging through the finance working groups. A lot of the budget officers, business administrators participate on this finance working group to review the level of effort required for our first quarter and third quarter financial projections. They were identified as requiring more effort and time compared to past experiences. And also to, just to have a general discussion on what are the financial management process pain points and identify those and then set up plans to address those all with the objective of mitigating some of the, the workload, workload challenges that are being faced. Over to you, Chris.
Thanks, Wayne. Well, and, and in the academic area, one of the, one of the pain points that we've heard from the budget officers had been how to, how to take care of reimbursement and payment for, for training, for professional development that generally happen through learning and teaching services. So we have consulted with budget officers. We've talked to chairs. We've talked to HR. We've talked to finance. And we've, we've put together a plan now that will centralize those payments so that the budget officers don't need to be involved in, in payment for, other than full-time doing PD for the, the reimbursement for faculty participating in the flip program for a variety, variety of things. And the, the implementation of this will require a minor modification to workday. And we are happily working our way through that process right now, but we're hopeful that within a matter of, of a month or two that we will be able to have that, have that in place and, and release the budget officers from needing to do that particular work. In terms of longer term, medium term issues, I, I also met with the academic budget officers and Christine Kelsey separately, talked about a number of these, these issues. There were a, a, a few particularly painful points where the, where the, the situation was, was particularly dire. And I've been working with management in those areas to do a redistribution of work, perhaps move a program or two out of, redistribute where, where programs reside. There have been some cases, again, where those, those were, there, there were particularly difficult workload issues where it was deemed that at least in the short term, we needed to add some more resources as we sort through the workforce planning issues and end up with the final issue. So we've, we've taken a variety of approaches to trying to alleviate those, those, those particular pain points. So I, I hope what you're hearing from this is that, that we've tried to live up to Claude's promise to take this very seriously, to not forget about it, to not simply just say we're looking into it, but take real concrete action that will begin to have the immediate impact that I know that group is, is looking for while we work toward much longer term solutions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, if I can add as well, this is a final statement that, you know, although, you know, many of the examples provided focus on, on the budget officer group, several of the initiatives will have a broader positive impact on other employee groups as well. And I think that's going to be the benefit to everyone.
Okay, thanks everyone. Well, we've got a question from Jill and it looks like there's a, a few of our colleagues that are interested in this question. And question is other plans for an in-person convocation this spring. It's been quite some time since we've had the pleasure of an in-person convocation. And Krista Pearson is happy to answer that question.
Thank you so much for the question, Jill, and for all the votes. I'm thinking those are votes that everyone wants in person. But really, very truly, and I'm speaking on behalf of a very hardworking group that includes our college events manager and special events coordinator and representatives from all the campuses alumni, the students association, really wonderful group of people who are putting together their minds to think, what does a hybrid event potentially look at, look like? And what are some of the options and scenarios we can come up with, not knowing what the health and safety protocols might be? We are anticipating that there will be significant loosening of those. But those options will be presented to the executive team in early March. But learning from the pandemic and even before that, we were trying to figure out a way to have a meaningful engagement with our online students. And so we do anticipate there'll be some virtual or online element embedded into the scenarios brought forward. Looking at really building on that learner-driven, flexible, choice-oriented solution. It could look like scenarios where we can't have as many guests, where we are still applying physical distancing. So we do anticipate it will be different. We are very, very hopeful for an in-person element to all the ceremonies. And so more to come. Great question. And we will let you know at our very earliest opportunity exactly what we've decided to move forward with. Again, more to come on that. Thank you. And all of our fingers are crossed.
Thanks, Krista. You know, we're all, I'm sure, really looking forward to that point when we can see our, our grads cross the stage in person again. We've got a question from Emily and I think lots of colleagues are quite interested in this. So I'm just, I'll get Diane ready to take this question. But can we get an update on the remote work policy? Where is the college at with it and when is it to be released?
Excellent. Thanks very much, Emily, for that question. I am going to turn it over to David. Before I turn it over to David, though, I wanted to just let everyone know that as we were working through the, the work model pilots, we did have to pause the pilots at the end of December, of course, as the college and the province had that blip where we went back to virtual for those that could go back virtual. So the people that were participating in the work model pilots, we did have to suspend it for, well, the end of December, beginning of January, right through to, into March, where we're looking to restart them when it, where it's feasibly optimal. And, and those are the non-academic departments, which I think David's going to be able to shed some light on. The critical thing about the work model pilots is to really give us the data that we need in order to be able to shape what the policies are going to look like on a more permanent basis. And we had originally, you know, some of David's schematics that he has put up in the past where it talked about by the end of April, we were hoping to have all of the work model pilots wrapped up so that we could then move forward with something of a more concrete basis. Well, we just had a three-month delay in collecting the data and that impacts as we still haven't been able to give Ryan everything that he needs from a space perspective, from our facilities perspective. We haven't been able to give it. Anyways, I, I, I'm just talking very high level. I'm going to turn it over to David who can actually walk us through a little bit more concretely, Emily.
Thanks for that Diane. Yeah, the work model pilots were officially paused. It was December seventeenth. You know, unfortunately, weren't able to secure an adequate data set as per our evaluation plan, which was unfortunate. But that being said, as Diane mentioned, we have agreement from the Algonquin College Executive Team to proceed with the relaunch of the work model pilots starting on March seventh. That would be the earliest date that folks could start their return. Now, those Algonquin College Leadership Team members participating in the pilot have been notified regarding the relaunch date and are once again encouraged to have those discussions with their people leaders, with their employees to determine optimal relaunch date. And, and most likely discuss a gradual return to rebuild those routines, especially for those coming on site or in a hybrid arrangement. If you recall, we did have a work model cross-functional team. So we have in fact relaunched that. And of course, that group will be critical to providing support to all participating areas. And it will definitely be aligned with the original goals and objectives of the initiative, which is to really understand the processes, the change management, the rigor required to enable flexibility for employees, as well as assess the impacts on learner and employee experience from the pilots themselves, which will be a critical input to the college-wide rollout of the flex program and policy. And once again, we'll anchor on our strategy statement, which is our model will be learner-driven, employer-defined, and informed by employee preferences. So once again, pilots are a goal. We're going to work with each of the teams. We're going to stay aligned with the health and safety guidelines for sure. And we'll do regular updates to the website and I can put the, the link here in the chat, but that'll be a, a place to go if you're interested in the current status. So that's it. Back to you, Diane.
Thank you. I just want to follow up one, one last point, Emily. What we had been talking about for a little while now is that the policy is the final steady state document. And so it's really important that we learn through this process that we develop what our permanent practice would be. And then that is the steady state. We're still in learning mode right now. And so I hope that answers your question.
Thanks Diane and David. Why don't we move on to a question from, from Sims. There used to be a link on the old MyAlgonquin to make suggestions for improvements on anything around the college. Is there something like this on my AC? And so Tracy, I think is going to take, take this question and try to answer it for us.
Thanks Christine and thanks Sims. So I'm trying to go back in my memory banks and think of what that particular button is that you're talking about. When I look back at my AC now, so if you go on the main webpage, algonquincollege.com and you come to our landing page, there's a little button on there that says more stories that gives you kind of an overview of everything that's on my AC. When you click on that, you will see a little button in the top that says submit news or events. So you could use that one if that's the only way you can kind of get information to us. But you can also email us. There is on, on the GMA, so that's Good Morning Algonquin that comes out every day. If you scroll down to the very bottom of that page, there is an email address there, communications@algonquincollege.com. Happy to take any feedback and any suggestions you have that can help improve the site. We're always looking to do that. And if that fails, you can always email me. I'm happy to take your, your feedback and look at it, digest it, pass it along and see what we can do to, to make things better and to improve things. So there's a couple of different ways you can, you can go about it, but hopefully that answers your question.
Thanks Tracy. So we're going to do one more question and then I think we'll launch another pool. So this question comes from Jill. So Jill wants to know if there will be an announcement soon about learning delivery for programs with spring semester classes. So I'm going to ask Chris to, to start the response for this question.
Sure. Thanks very much Christine. Great question. We are actually quite hopeful and planning for a, a spring that looks much more like our, our, our new normal, our new future. So we are actually planning for allowing as much activity on campus as, as we wish without physical distancing, but recognizing again, hey, my, my, my longstanding message, we've learned an awful lot during the pandemic. It's been painful. You know, some of the lessons haven't always been fun. But we have learned a lot about, about how to deliver our curriculum to our students and to really be able to increase the flexibility and options to our students. And are looking to make sure that we don't lose that. However, with that said, I know that the program teams, the, the faculty, the coordinators, the chairs, the deans have all been working, working hard to make the decisions around the specific plans for the spring term. Things have been loaded. And if you're familiar with the, with the registrar's webpage, there's a, a, an admissions program delivery update page that you can refer to that will have not only all of the winter delivery information, but everything that we've got for decisions made for the spring as well. There's probably still a few tweaks that are happening around the edges for the spring delivery. But that information is, is readily available. I hope that answers your questions. If you, question, if you'd like to follow up, if you've got specific questions, please drop another, another note in. But those are, those are coming out and it, it's going to be an exciting time. We're, we're, we're really hoping that we're finally getting into that, that everybody take a breath and, and getting back to our, our, our new way of being. Christine?
Thanks, Chris. And I think Joanne has lifted, left a link in the, in the chat box to, to find that list of program delivery updates. Claude, were you wanting to add something?
Yeah, I'll also add that in my, I believe it was the twenty-eighth of January, a message to our community. There was just a couple of lines about our twenty-two spring, summer term. And it just said that with the province reopening plans underway, we are planning accordingly and will be reverting to on-campus face-to-face learning for our spring term. And we'll be looking forward to welcoming back our learners and employee back on campus. So it was a quick a couple of lines just to state that, as Chris had mentioned, with the loading done in the manner that we had originally planned to do winter. This is how we are planning now to deliver the spring and summer term.
Great. Thank you. So I'll just, before we start the poll, I'll remind you, don't be shy. Put your questions in the chat, in the, the Q and A and, you know, raise your hand and indicated if you'd like to come off mute and, and come on camera and, and ask a question. But it's been a great discussion so far. So thanks for being engaged today. Why don't we take a minute for another poll? So we'd like to get your feedback. What format do you prefer for future town halls to be? In-person only, virtual only, or hybrid? Give everyone a few seconds to, to make their choice. I have a feeling I might know which one the answer is going to be. Let's see. Be nice to get a chance to be back in person with everyone, I'm sure. And results, ah, hybrid, sixty-one percent like, I guess, flexibility, an option for virtual only and in-person. Great. Though I don't have any questions right now. Oh, thanks Jill. Why don't we unmute Jill and give her a chance to ask a question in person? Go ahead, Jill.
Thanks very much. This was too long to type out, so I thought I'd ask it in person. At a previous town hall in the fall semester, I asked a question about the automatic availability of BrightSpace courses for students as falling on AC day one. And we were provided with an explanation mostly about notifications and how those might impact students as teachers were updating courses. Fast forward to our January start where some programs, including mine, experienced a crisis for students where despite being registered, they didn't have access to all of their BrightSpace courses, which of course wasn't discovered until AC day one and, and a few days afterwards. BrightSpace Help or ITS did ultimately give all of us an explanation as to how that happened. And, and as well as a, you know, a corrective action that students could take. And to my understanding, it is now stabilized. So what I would like to know is, first of all, can we get an update as to what is being done to make sure that this doesn't happen again, leading into the fall semester especially? And then further to suggest perhaps that if we didn't rely on that automatic availability of AC day one and had courses available automatically a week earlier, then that would have given program coordinators, especially I think, an opportunity to be aware of the issue. You know, communicate some, some messaging to students as a whole and just sort of get in front of the problem. And then of course, allow students an opportunity to make sure that they had access to the courses that they needed in time for their first day. Access to the courses that they needed in time for their first day of classes.
Okay, thanks, Jill, for that question. I'm going to suggest, Chris, would you like to start a response?
Well, let let me give that a start, but I I I will part of that, Jill, I'm going to need to get back to you. I there's some parts that I don't have the technical knowledge on the top of my head to give you a good answer at the moment. But with regards to the the incident that well, the the situation that you described, beginning of the winter term, that was a very unfortunate Incident. It was a data transfer challenge. That that that, as you indicated, I do believe has been has been corrected and should not reoccur. Where some students didn't get automatically enrolled into their their bright space shells and didn't know they hadn't been, and the faculty didn't know they hadn't been. We we I acknowledge that that's something that is is Unfortunate is an understatement. And and again, we've we've worked very hard to correct that. I will look into that and and make sure that we do have that right right piece In place. But with regards to the the giving students access to the bright space show a week before. Again, some of the again, the explanation that was given, I'm going to need to get back to you. I haven't I haven't refreshed my memory. But it's my recollection That part of the challenge is if we give students access that week before, every time a faculty member makes any change to that bright space shell. It's going to automatically push out a notification to the students in the class. So as that faculty member is doing the 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 work that they do in the last week, leading up to the class, putting the final, the final polish on those courses. It's going to result in a lot of communication to the to the students That may not always be desirable. So it's a it's a a give and take sort of thing with that. Now, for returning students, that's easy. Faculty can can choose to turn their courses on as soon as they like. For those returning students, it's only the level one students That it that it does create a problem. So this is the point where I need to refresh my memory just a little bit and get back to you. But those are those are some of the the challenges That we've got. And and I'm being told that my my memory is is pretty well correct at this point. Is there a follow up that you'd like to to ask with that?
Joe?
Yes, am I still on? Okay, thank you. Yes, your memory is better than you think, Chris, actually. It was the notification issue which which did make sense to me at the time. But and and there may be workload implications that I'm not understanding here. But if we have chosen a date of AC day one to be the automatic opening date, let's say For students, unless, of course, faculty have opened their their courses earlier. Were were the date moved earlier for students to allow a bit of a buffer? Then, in my mind, it would stand to reason that faculty would be then expected to Have their courses pretty much ready for students on whatever that earlier date was. That would, you know, and and other coordinators may may have a different view perhaps, but Would, I think, reduce significant anxiety among students who are, you know, starting Whether it be in class or whether it be virtual, but starting school and wanting The comfort of knowing that they have access to their their courses on Bright Space at least If not a week, then a few days before the actual Start of class, particularly, I would say, in the winter semester, since some students Who are coming in particularly level one may have a class that afternoon Of that very day. They don't even have, you know, the full day perhaps to sort out an issue As they may in the fall.
You you raise some very good points, Jill. I I think what I'd like to do is is take that offline. Let me let me look into it. And perhaps, you know, you'd be willing to have a conversation with me. Might be some some information for some some other folks. Just get a a few voices at the table here. I don't want to. I don't want to create a a bigger problem by trying to solve this problem. So I hear you. I understand. And and let me get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Jill, for the question. We've got a question that's come in from Stella. So how will programming look in our new normal? Many of my mature students and distant distance learners very much want to see the virtual learning components remain for appropriate programs, for example, business or computer programs. I think this one will go back to Chris for the first First try at the answer as well.
Sure. Thanks for this question. I'm I'm going to. I'm going to take all the time I saved in my my enrollment update and give you a good answer to this. These are. These are some of the things that we've learned coming through the pandemic. We we started out in an emergency remote delivery where in in one week's time, I'm sure those of you that were here at that time Remember it as fondly as I do, but we were we were forced into making a a very abrupt change. But since that time, we've gotten a whole lot better at it. And in keeping with the learner driven plan, this notion of flexibility relating to delivery Is something that has been widely embraced by faculty. By by lots of faculty, not just here at Algonquin, but really around the province and around the world. And this whole notion of multimodal delivery or high flex or bimodal, there there's a number of names That are associated with that. And we've been, we have been slowly working towards a a pilot and and learning how to do that rather than diving in all at once. What I have been asking my teams to do as we move into a exploring this multimodal delivery Is ensuring that the students in whatever modality they're they are choosing to participate with Get the same really fabulous learning experience. So I don't want those in class to to be shortchanged while those on the on the in the virtual portion are getting a much better experience or vice versa. To do it properly is going to take A technology that that's able to serve the needs of this and do it well. It's going to need to take faculty that have The the pedagogy and and the skills and understanding as to how to deliver that. And the supports necessary to be able to conduct the class this way. And looking at how we might go about doing that. So rather than diving in all at once. You know, everybody back in the pool, let's all do multimodal. And also recognizing that the to to outfit a classroom with the really good technology Is an expensive proposition. We have set up through learning and teaching services A number of of pilot, I shouldn't say truly learning and teaching services Being coordinated by learning and teaching services. A number of pilot programs that are beginning to go down this multimodal delivery. That would, in in theory, enable the student on any given day to choose what modality they want. Whether it's okay today, I just, I really just want to hang out with my my colleagues in the class. I I I'm feeling social. I want to be part of that group. They come to campus and they participate face to face. Or, you know, one day they they discover that You know, I just, things are not working. My 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 jammies are calling me. I don't want to have to get dressed up to go out in public. I'm just going to participate online today. You know, whatever, I'm 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 being facetious. Whatever the reason is, there's a lot of really good reasons why somebody Would not be able to. It may be that they're they're gainfully employed. They have a full time job. And they're not able to take the travel time to come in sick kids. Exactly. So many really good reasons. As to why we would want to be able to provide these options for for our for our learners. But we're we're also recognizing that we want to do it right. We want to make sure that it's a good experience for everybody involved. For the learners, obviously. Yes, of course, they're the heart of what we do. But the faculty that are going to be working with the students. The 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 student support services that are going to be helping these students have a wonderful, rich experience and 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 be successful. You know, the registrar's office that has to sort out how to register students and these sorts of things. And how does that work with our existing systems? And how is that going to work with the with the new student information system when it comes online? Lots and lots and lots of moving pieces. How does ITS support Both the front end and the back end of this new technology? So Absolutely, this is a path that we want to go down. This is going to be a part of our new normal. But also recognize that not every course is going to be well suited for that delivery. We're in it. We're an institution of applied learning. There are many parts of this that we really do need to be hands on throughout the entire pandemic from July of 2020 on. We have been inviting students back to our physical campuses Because they need, that was the only way that they could get that aspect of their education. So we want to make sure that we're getting the right solution for the right situation with the right supports and the right knowledge to be able to conduct it. As I promised, a long winded answer, but that's what the new normal looks like. It's not going to be 100% there for the spring term. We we have a plan to roll out About 10 classrooms a year for the next three years with this Really solid technology. And as we learn more and more through the pilot. Will gain a better understanding of how far down that path we need to go. Do we need to make adjustments to the technology? How do we help the faculty be comfortable in providing this type of of learning modality for our students? So I'll stop before Claude and Christine get out the shepherd's hook, but Clearly something I'm excited about, and I'm glad you asked the question.
Thanks, Chris, and thanks Stella for your question. Claude, is there anything you would like to to add to that? We're we we don't have any more questions. So come on, colleagues, we've got another hour available to us. If there's more questions. We'd love to answer them. And if not, we will, we will probably wrap up a little bit early today. But maybe I'll 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 ask if anyone has, oh. I was going to ask if anyone had anything they wanted to jump in, but first we will go to Kalila.
Hi, I just have a quick question. It may be a manager question, but Some of us have joined the college community on a virtual basis. We've never been on campus. And we're excited to come to campus, but Have been delayed to January and then March. Now we're looking at May. And I'm just wondering, in the future, if we do have to go virtual, will there be an option For employees to continue coming to campus? Or will that be at the The manager's discretion?
So I think I I'll ask Diane to respond to this question as a kind of a follow up to the earlier discussion about the work model pilot.
Thanks, Christine. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask David. David has been working With his colleagues on a kind of more broader cross college committee That has been looking to address some of these things. So he may have that particular answer to your question. Over to you, David.
Thanks, Diane, and thanks, Kelly, for the question. And so, you know, earlier I spoke about the work model pilots and, of course, Lots of rigor and processes that we're moving towards and adopting. Those outside the work bottle pilots, this absolutely does require attention. And the Integrated College Development Planning Committee has actually formed a subcommittee To really take a look at this and provide guidance. At this point in time, our group is really focused on developing the communication plan With the goal to provide people, leaders and employees with as much advanced notice as possible regarding An eventual return to campus. And once again, as I mentioned earlier, it's about those routines we had. You know, we potentially we had pre Omicron, and there's going to be most likely a gradual ramping up period, potentially even As we head towards the cut over from winter to spring term. And once again, to your point, Kelly, there definitely are going to be discussions that will need to take place between people leaders And their employees, both one on one and in their intact teams to really review their area area plans. Taking a look at the planning assumptions for spring term, factoring in the latest health and safety protocols. And so that will definitely go out. There'll be some communication on that front. And as I mentioned, it's kind of like we have two streams running concurrently. We have a work model pilots and those outside. And of course, I just want to mention as well that arrangements made outside the work model pilot will most likely be temporary, could be temporary, could be subject to change. As a result of the best practices, the learnings and everything that will go into The actual launch of the formal policy. So once again, more information, more communication to come. But that is that is the current response on this front. Diane, back to you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to Kind of go back to the the question that you had is, would we be able to come on campus regardless? And so, you know, listening to the head of our facilities Area that was really contemplating today earlier with they said, actually, with the executive team About really needing to understand the space requirements of those that are required to be on site because Those that may still remain virtual, they may need to redeploy some of that space. So I think right now, to be very direct and answer your question, it'd be really hard for for either David or I to answer that question. Is it? It really kind of depends on on how you and your department are starting to Return your services if you're not part of the work model pilots. And then what does the data that we're collecting in the work model pilots Help inform some of our space requirements and the space utilization? So really long winded answer. Apologize, but I hope I'll be able to that shines a little bit of clarity on it for you.
Great. Thanks, Diane and and David and Kalila for your question. So what we're going to do now, we're going to, we're going to go to our third poll and to see if there's any You know, additional questions that might might come in to us today. So we'll launch that that third poll. We We want to know how often you think we should have these town halls? Should we be scheduling them monthly? Quarterly? Or only after a significant, you know, announcement is made or information is announced? So let us know how often you think we should continue these town halls. Again, I'll remind you, we'll, you know, take a little bit more time to see if there are any other questions that might come either into the The Q and A, or If you want to unmute yourselves or else we'll we'll probably be wrapping up early a little bit today. So let's see, do we have enough answers? Can we go to the response? Okay, looks like folks would like to see, you know, maybe a quarterly or a little bit more frequent than that Town hall sessions. That's great. Thanks for providing your feedback. Okay, it looks like we've got a question from Dan. So Dan, feel free to unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, thanks very much. Good afternoon, everybody. I apologize. I'm keeping us from leaving class early. A question that's been kind of in back of my mind for some time. I'm a student success specialist. I work with students on a pretty regular basis. Something I see quite frequently Is their experience, their student experience, user experience, if you will, within the bright space tool. And I'm wondering if there has been any conversation, and if so, what that conversation has looked like. About trying to make the course shells, the grade books, etc., consistent from course to course to course. It seems to be something that is always different. And I find that to be a frustration that students have is trying to interpret Where they can find assignments, where they can find materials, or when they're trying to figure out their grades. How they can read and understand their grades. For example, In one course, there might be a a letter grade shown. In another course, it might be numeric. I just find it a bit challenging for them as well as myself. And I'm wondering if this has been brought up at any point. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And I know that Chris can speak to this question because we were just talking about it this morning.
Hey, Dan, thanks. Thanks for the question. It's also one of those things that I will note that in for the for the past several years, this has been one of the students associations Real priorities as well to to address the the Ability to have a more common experience within bright space. Now, even going back even further, back, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago now, even if back in the old In the olden days of of blackboard, we'd even talked so far about going down the path of of common look and feel. So that there was a template that everybody had to use. That never that never received a whole lot of a whole lot of traction. That that was not a popular approach. However, we have been talking a lot more about consistent use of bright space. So rather than than common look and feel, really just making sure that all of the elements are there. And making sure that they are easy to find for our students. Including use ma- making sure that the calendar is there That has the the CSI with the with the due dates of all assignments. Information on how those assignments are going to be assessed. The other exam schedule, those sorts of things. To use the grading function within within bright space. Whether a faculty member chooses to put it up as a as a as a numerical grade or a a letter grade. If it's a numerical grade, it's certainly an easy thing to simply go to the grading policy and convert it over. It's not so not quite as precise to go the other direction, but at least if faculty are It's not so, not quite as precise to go the other direction, but at least if faculty are, are putting the marks into bright space on a regular basis. So that the students have some sense of, of where they're at in, in, in terms of progress through the course. Would be very helpful. So the conversation that Christine was referring to was a, was a conversation that we've been having. Around AA forty-two, the policy governing the, the use of the learning management system. And making sure that that policy covers those things that you've just described so that we're giving the guidance and the framework. To our faculty and to our students says, this is how the learning management system should be used. So yes, we are, we are working very hard on, on updating that policy and hope to have something. Coming out and be, be ready for use well in advance of the, of the fall term. Lots of, lots of information. I'm, I'm seeing things coming in. CSI had its own tab. We, we need to make sure that that page is, is being used as the. It's the landing site. It should be the, 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 the one stop shop for students to go to. To learn everything they need to know about their course. What's expected of them, what assignments are coming due, what resources we're going to be using. All of that, that's, that's the learning management system and how it should be used. But to do it in a way that is, that is easily navigable by the students. Did that answer your question, Dan?
Yes, Chris, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Chris. Well, we've got a, a different type of question. So this is a question about the wall in the ACE building, which I'm assuming is a living wall and I probably haven't even seen it. So I'm going to say is the living wall in the ACE building going to be replanted? And if yes, is there a timeline? And I'm wondering actually if anyone might know the answer to that question. So I'm not sure which of on our executive team might have that answer.
I can answer that, Christine.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Yes, there is a plan to address the living wall in ACE. We'll be doing that work in March. We did, we have some equipment that failed us and we were unable to. Maintain the wall as we would have intended over the pandemic, primarily due to the, the servicing required for the equipment. Was sourced from the US and the, we couldn't get the parts or the. Or the service to across the border in a timely manner. So. My understanding is that's been addressed and we'll have that wall looking green again by the end of March.
That's great. Thanks, Dwayne. And so we've got a, a question now about our international students from Paula. Is the college prepared to support more international students? Currently, some students are struggling to receive the support they need. She's wondering whether this is because the services, you know, are overwhelmed with, with requests or if the students aren't seeking the appropriate services. So I guess we'll, we'll start with Chris on this question, I think. Thank you.
Well, as, as we have been, you recall from my very, very quick enrollment update, we have significantly increased. The number of international students that we are trying to recruit. And the promise that I've been making to my team as we've gone along. Is that this is not going to simply be an additional burden on existing resources. But that as we increase those, those enrollments that we are concomitantly increasing the, the. The, the, the personnel that we need to be able to do it, the staff that we need, the, the, the resources that are necessary. To ensure that those additional students are going to be getting the support that they need to be successful. The last thing I want to do is invite a student to campus to study with us and not set them up for success. So this, this is one of the conversations I, I have this, it, it, it's not just an international education center answer. It's not just an academic question with the student success specialists and. And providing, you know, making sure that the, the faculty feel well supported and supporting these students. It's not just a, a students, student services question. But really all of those pieces that fit together to provide that learning experience for these students. And provide the support that they need to be successful. So it, it is a question that I wrestle with. It's a question that I worry about. But it is one that we are trying to address as we move forward with our, with our growth in international student enrollment. And Laura, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Sure, Chris. Yeah, it's, it's not, yeah, not an easy question, not an easy answer. And I would say. You know, the same type of question could be applied for our domestic students, but you know, what I can say is. You know, there's a, there's a committee of international students and we ask them for their experience. I think, you know, and just even our inner surveys in general to our students. Trying to understand the barriers that they have and, and using the, those survey results. To what our students are saying to help improve. And so what I'm seeing in some of the survey results more, more so than not is. Their, their, their lack of awareness or they're too shy to ask. And so what we're really trying to do is. Overcome those biggest barriers that we're hearing, create more awareness. And we actually, there's a lot of talk today about. The use of bright space and actually creating information in bright space for students to access these services right at their fingertips. Those types of things, but yeah, it's, it's, it's just something we, we, we think about. We do go sees, we take the student feedback in particular and, and just keep on trying to work it, but, but, but. Chris is correct and we're saying, you know, we, we also know we have to enhance some of those resources as, as we grow. We need to be able to support that as well. So hopefully that. Answers to a certain extent of what we're thinking about and, and what we're doing with regards to that.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Chris, and thanks Paula for your question. So the next question is from Kelly and I'm going to ask our, our president Claude to, to respond to this one. Her question is that she, she understands the province has removed the vaccine mandate from the rules. But she's wondering why the college would do so, so quickly. Doesn't have an issue coming back to campus, but prefer that at least the. Have that knowledge that people are vaccinated and we're a little bit safer on campus. So Claude, would you respond to that question for us?
Sure, absolutely, Christine. Thank you, Kelly, for that question because I know it's on the mind of many people as we, as we transition. Yet again, through steps to the lift restrictions, pandemic restrictions and that always puts people. At some level of unease because they, they don't know necessarily how, how safe things are. If, especially if you haven't been on campus, let, let me, I'll throw some numbers and also try to reassure. You, Kelly and others who may have that in the back of their mind as well. Over eighteen thousand people have used our vaccination app to come on campus, eighteen thousand. The number of people who are fully vaccinated is ninety-nine point eight three percent. Okay, so only point one seven percent of that eighteen thousand. Were not vaccinated, but we had an exemption and we're required to test regularly in order to be on campus. The campus is an extremely safe place. We've asked and we continue to ask people to. Adhere to our protocols, which includes washing your hands, not touching your face, wearing a mask. And maintaining two meter physical distancing. As time progresses, some of these restrictions will be lifted. Starting, and you've seen this in the announcements recently from the premier around capacity limits and access to more and more. Amenities by more people. So these will continue to take place as it is informed. By public health and by data, data coming from the science table around. Transmission of the virus, number of cases, hospitalization, ICU, say. Parameters around number of people passing away from the disease. So. Right now, the numbers related to the case transmission is, is not as accurate as it once was because they have limited the number. Tests to specific vulnerable population. Having said that. The campus has and continues to be a very safe place to be at. And we'll continue to ensure that whether it's because of the pandemic or other reasons that we would want to ensure that. Now we make sure we have rules in place in order to maintain safety for our learners and our employees. I am meeting with Ottawa Public Health tonight and I'm also meeting on Friday with our chief medical officer of health of Ontario, Dr. Moore. We, reason for these meetings is to gain further clarity on, on these things that you're asking about around. The continued proof of vaccination to have access to on campus activities. And other requirements that right now we have put in place as a result of. Regulations, directive and other guidance from either the government or public health agencies. So those will continue to be revisited. As I said, I'm having two meetings this week with officials to better understand. The trajectory of where these things are going. So that we can make the right decisions for our population. I have to say right now, as I said, the, by far, the vast, vast majority. Of the people that have gone to college, ninety-nine point eight three percent come to college are vaccinated as per the definition from Health Canada. And those people will continue to be so in, into the future. That doesn't take away their vaccination. Even if at some point we stop asking for that proof every day. Right? So that's, that's all I can say at the moment. I guess we'll have to continue to stay tuned to how the pandemic trajectory goes and. Continue to be in conversation with the government and public health official and we'll pass on to you. The decisions that we make as, as a community here. Hope that answers your question. If, if not, or if you have further clarification, please either put it in the, in the Q and A or put up your hand and happy to chat.
Thanks Claude for responding to that question, which lots of our colleagues, it looks like had, had the similar questions about. So we've got another question. This one I think is going to go to, back to Chris Jansen. So students, this is asked by Debbie. So students who are ruled in AC online sometimes raise concerns that they have course requirements that are due during the holiday shutdown period in December. During this time, they, they don't have the support from tutors and Cal and counseling. Has any consideration been given to, been given to increasing the availability of these resources for these students? Or perhaps suspending their courses during this time? So Chris? Let's get a, take a stab at this answer.
Thanks for that. Thanks Debbie. I, I admit that I, I don't have a lot of information on, on the tip of my fingers or a tip of my tongue to answer this. I suspect that this is due to the monthly intakes in, in AC online. You know, we have, we have intakes that, that begin in October, intakes that begin in November and in December. That overlap with that, with that, that holiday time. That said, I would, I, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that we would have requirement to do during the holiday shutdown period. I, I, I had not heard this before and, and I confess that I don't, I don't have any information on, on being able to answer that. So I, I will, I will look into this. I will get a little bit more information and get back to you and see if we can't find a, a solution. That, that works for the students during this time. So thanks for the question and I'll get back to you.
Okay, thanks, Chris, for that answer. Well, again, we've got a little bit of a lull in, in questions right now. So Claude, can I ask you if there's? Any updates that you might, might want to make and see if we have any final questions before we might wrap up a bit early?
Yeah, sure, Christine. I know that some of you have put some. Things in the chat to advertise some upcoming events. I know there was one from Sarah Gallon. He has an event this Friday at ten AM. For leadership development for women. It's a community of practice. There has been and up till the end of the month, of course, it is the Black History Month and Black Futures Month. And there are a number of events related to that. So please look at the AC calendar on my AC. To see what events you would like to participate in. In March, we have a couple of events coming up called AC Engage, three that I'm aware of, at least. March tenth, the fifteenth and the twenty-fifth. And those will be a one hour advance with a guest speaker and great to get information and get everyone involved and engage in those activities. We also have a coffee break, one of my coffee breaks coming back. I think it's going to be a hybrid coffee break on the second of March. I'm looking forward to it. We're going to have the opportunity to have some people on campus, of course, respecting all our. Protocol rules in place at the time, but also broadcasting it and inviting those who cannot be on campus to join us for a coffee break on the second of March. So a couple of events coming up that will continue to bring our community together as we always try to do. So please watch on my AC in our calendar section for upcoming events. I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thanks, Claude. Well, I don't see any further. Oh, maybe is there one more question that's just come in? Sorry, I might have just missed one. Yes, we have one from Susan. So if a faculty member is immune compromised but required to deliver their class in person. How will that be handled? And I'm thinking this might be a combination of Chris and Diane that might like to respond to this question. Maybe Chris first?
I'm just gonna let Diane go first.
I can go first. It's okay. I just wanted to highlight, thank you very much for that question. I just wanted to let all of you know that within our wellness and abilities team, there is the, the normal accommodation processes. That we have that we would encourage you to, to reach out to. Jessica Myers is our acting manager of wellness and abilities. We also have wellness and abilities specialists that you can be, you can contact to discuss that particular situation and what that would look like. But our accommodation processes always are in place for anything that is required for our medical accommodation. I don't know, Chris, if you wanted anything to add to that?
I, I, I was hoping you'd be able to give that, that level of answer because I, I was, I was going to struggle with that. We're, we're, we're still in uncertain times, but as, as Diane said, that's, that's the approach that we would, we would take. I, I'll stop. I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thanks very much, Chris. Thanks, Diane. Well, every time I say there's no more questions, somebody puts one in the chat. So I feel like I need to just wait, you know, count to, count to three. You know, and, and see if something, if something drops in. But I'm not seeing anything. So I'm wondering if we're really, really kind of wrapping up with the questions at this point. Which means we've, we've done our polls. So we would start to turn this over. I would turn this over to Ron for, for a closing. So Ron, are you ready to take us through a community closing?
I am, I am. So before I share those good words with you folks. Christine, I just wanted to say really well done today. Thank you for stepping up and assisting us today as an MC. Very, very well done and. Very easy to keep a good mind when you have somebody facilitating such as this. So big thank you. So the point of closings really come from one of the first ceremonies that we were given. And I'm speaking as a, as a Houdini Shoney, as an ear carer, somebody from Six Nations. And we do those closings really to acknowledge each other. We do those closings to acknowledge the work that we do, the reasons we do it in preparation for continuing to do that work. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it a little bit different today because today, today's really important day. Claude, Claude mentioned in the beginning, I forget the word that you used already. Claude, what was that word?
I know, I, I use several words, but.
Well, it was about the numbers, remember? It was the.
Palindrome, I think?
Oh, palindrome of, of two, of the twenty-two of twenty-two. Is that what?
Okay, palindrome. I'm, I'm going to look that up later. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. I see that you put that, a number of folks have answered in the chat. Thank you. So a hundred years ago today, my, my grandmother was born. And so today, you know, two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two is a big, is a big number at home in our community and for my family. And the reason I bring that up is not so much because of my grandma, but because of the, because of the, the words that she shared with me today. You know, I got a chance to talk to her and I said, how proud and how thankful and all those things that, that come with talking to a major. But I had asked her, you know, if you could, if you could go back or if you could re rejuvenate something, if you could even live. Something over again, you know, is there something that, that, that your mind would go quickly to? And she said, yeah, there's two things. When the family is together and happy and healthy, I would go back to that in a, in a moment. And second, when I have really good work to do that was benefiting the community. You know, feeling that sense of purpose and that sense of purpose really kind of cemented for me when she was talking. You know, feeling that sense of purpose and that sense of purpose really kind of cemented for me when she was talking about family, but also the influence that in this case she had, but, but really I'm turning it to us as college community members that we have on each other, our work family and the families that interact and intersect with, with us as an institution and us as a, as a community. And so when we're happy and when we're healthy and when we feel that purpose, you know, is something that my grandmother, who turned a hundred years old today, said was some of the most important parts of her life. And so with that, we put our minds to all of those who came before us. When they contributed to the health and the happiness of their families and contributed to their communities. And we put our minds and we bundle the thank you together and we throw them really far into the four directions. Gustan Haladu and Gwatin Gwahge, put our minds together in their one. Then we acknowledge each other for caring for our own health, our own happiness, our own wellness. And we contribute to each other's work as we give each other a sense of purpose and hopefully accomplishment. As we transform hopes and dreams into all these people's lifelong success. We'll bundle thank yous and throw them really far into the four directions. Gustan Haladu and Gwatin Gwahge. And third, and finally, we put our minds and our attention, our hearts, our love and our thinking to all of those who are coming up yet. Some of them, maybe they're coming up next year. Some of them, maybe in the summer. Some of them maybe aren't even born yet and they come up soon. For it's them that we ultimately do this work. We'll put our thank yous, our mind, our love and our intention. Bundle them really tightly and we'll throw them far into the four directions. Gustan Haladu and Gwatin Gwahge, Danito. With that, our minds are one. Travel in love, peace and harmony.